I call this public meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Rock call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Donahue?
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order 3A, Correspondence received September 13th, 2022, from OECD regarding code enforcement report for City Council. 3B, Controller's Report for the month ending August 31st, 2022.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one quick one. So St. Louis' parish will once again be conducting their annual drive-through pasta dinner. When? It'll be Thursday, September 22nd, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. I'm sorry. Where? The church parking lot. The cost will be $14. It includes penny pasta with meatball salad, dinner roll, and biscotti for dessert. Tickets can be purchased by calling the rectory or by calling Joe Guido at 570-955-7469. That is all I have. Thank you.
Do any other council members have any announcements?
Yes, I have one. The city is hosting a COVID vaccine clinic. You can get your boosters there. It's going to take place on the 24th from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM, and that'll be at the Pavilion at Naug Park. And there'll be Pfizer and Moderna doses available and the newly authorized boosters. You can pre-register by calling 570-VACCINE or 570-822-2463, but walk-ins are also welcome. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any announcements?
I have two brief ones. I just want to congratulate Scranton Police Department Training Sergeant Christopher Halick for being named a finalist for the Greater Wyoming Valley Chamber of Commerce 2022 Young Professionals Hero of the Year Award. The award ceremony is being held at PNC Field in Music on Thursday, October 6th. And then I also want to announce that the Manuka Lions Club is holding their annual Charity Golf Classic on October 1st, Saturday, October 1st, at Pine Hills Country Club. 7:00 AM registration when a shotgun start at 8:00 AM. Please contact the Manuka Lions if you're interested in that. And that's all I have.
Fourth Order, Citizens Participation.
First on the list, Joan Honeanitz.
Joan Honeanitz, Scranton. And what is the status of the union contracts?
One has been agreed to and ratified to DPW. We're expecting legislation on that. The other negotiations are still ongoing.
Okay. I noticed in the Controller's Report for August that Euffberg and Associates were paid $45,919.70 for their work in August. Well, they were paid in August, so that fee for the Labor Council continues to go up. And I'm just wondering, what will be the final number when this is all said and done? And what is the status of the 2021 audit?
Mr. Schuster, would you like to give an update on that?
Would you like me to wait till fifth order, or would you like it now?
I can't hear you.
Would you like me to wait till fifth order?
Yeah, if you would. But I will remind you that there are only 56 days until November 15th, when you must have the budget presented to you. So hopefully, the audit and the contracts will be settled and wrapped into the budget proposals by then. Can you tell me how much money the city has collected so far under the payroll preparation tax?
I don't have exact numbers on that. We are planning on having a caucus on that in October.
Okay. Who's collecting that for us?
Burkheimer.
Burkheimer. And how long have we been collecting that, since June?
So the first, the first, yeah, since the end of June. Because we extended the deadline once, the initial deadline once, to June 30th.
If possible, if you could tell Burkheimer when they come to have that number available, because by then, you're looking at July, August, September, October, looking at a good four months by the time you're going to have a caucus. So that should be a substantial number when you compare it to the business and mercantile tax. And they should have no reason to say, "I don't know." They should know. Item 5G, Community Development Properties Incorporated requesting a grant of, I believe it's $210,000, is for HVAC repairs to the first floor of the Linden Street Garage. Is that correct? Is it 5G?
Yes.
The HVAC repairs. Community Development Properties, are they a nonprofit?
They are.
Okay, so they're collecting rental income from five tenants on the first floor, and they're applying for a grant. And they're a nonprofit, but they're going to collect rental. I hope they're paying taxes on that rental income. Would be a nice thing for them to confirm for us. And you know, if I were to open Joan's Pizzeria somewhere downtown, I hope somebody, you know, thinks of my rental income and does all the repairs and maintenance for me, too, whether they're profit or nonprofit. And speaking of nonprofits, during that October caucus, are we going to get the answers to the questions posed by Mr. Lozor and Attorney McGovern at that same caucus with regard to...
Yes, yes, I'm hopeful.
Okay, well, if not, maybe somebody should schedule a second caucus, because I think that the businesses that have to pay this tax should be given that answer. I mean, money's somewhat tight. With regard to the agreement with Lackawanna College and the $1,000 that they are going to pay for use of that field through the end of the year, and I saw in the backup that they're responsible for all the operation and maintenance costs, may I assume that if those costs exceed $1,000, Lackawanna College is still on the hook to pay them?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And how much time do other public entities, the general public, get to use that field vis-à-vis Lackawanna College? Has somebody put up a schedule, or can they?
I'll ask, we'll reach out to the Parks Department to see if we could get a schedule for that.
I think that would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg, so I don't forget, will you reach out to the Parks Department and see if they have a schedule for Lackawanna's use of Chick-fil-A?
I will, Mr. Donahue.
Thank you. Next on the list, Tim Schwartz.
All right, thank you for the time. I'm here, I'm the president of the Hill Neighborhood Association, and speaking in support of, but not on behalf of, the group of neighbors that live near the hospital where the zoning is changing, or has been proposed to change. I want to share a couple stories with you, quick stories with you. I was up in the park, Naug Park, a couple, a couple days ago, and I was talking to a neighbor who lived right there by the hospital. It was late at night, and I said, "Hey, look how beautiful the sunset is." She looked back at me and says, "Well, I hope I can, I need to look at it now, because I'm not going to be able to see it too much longer." Heartbreaking for me, and I didn't really, I felt really bad about bringing it up. Secondly, a couple weeks ago, I wrote a letter to the editor about the zoning. Somebody posted it on Facebook, on the Hill Neighborhood page, and one of the comments underneath said, "Well, it's a small price to pay for more health care in the city of Scranton." I believe the city of Scranton, and everybody in the Hill believes that the city of Scranton needs more health care. I think that, I think that's really clear, but more health care at the cost of neighborhoods, and more health care at the cost of 50, 60 different households, that's a really stiff price to pay. And I'm not sure about paying that price. And I know the neighbors that live up there are beside themselves about paying that price. So what I'm saying to all that is, is please consider the amount of grief and heartache and stress and pain that have, these neighbors have gone through in these last eight months as you think about, and the zoning map. These are incredible life changes that are being forced upon people. I think if that was forced upon me, it'd be terrible to try to build up my, pack up my entire house, pack up my kids, pack up my family, leave all the memories from years of raising my kids and years of living with my friends behind, and go find another place to live, which, to be argumentative, I'm not sure would be in the city of Scranton, because of taxes and schooling and all that other stuff. But I don't want to be argumentative. If the zoning goes through as civic, as I've talked with you all before, I think it puts every resident on call in this city. If there's a resident living near a corporation that has a really good idea, like, "We need more health care in this city," if I'm a resident living near a corporation like that, it puts me on call. If they have a really good idea, maybe they're going to buy up my neighborhood, maybe they're going to try and buy up me, knock down all the houses, and all of a sudden, I can look up and down my street just to see a barren wasteland. I would hope you would consider that as, as part of the zoning, part of the zoning map that you have to vote on. Overall, I think this is a city that cares about the quality of life of our residents, and people up on the Hill will tell you, they're the ones that listen to the helicopters come in, they're the ones that hear the garage door beeping every time somebody goes in, they're the ones that live with the extra lights that come with more development, more commercial development, not commercial, more hospital development, I don't know the right word, but we're a city that cares about the quality of life of our, of our residents. We're a city that cares about neighborhoods. This city is built on neighborhoods. That's what I've come to learn since I've lived here, the city is built upon our neighborhoods. It's a city that must care about the livelihoods of our citizens and be concerned about the incredible disruption that the people in those three streets up above Harrison have been dealing with for months, grief and heartache and pain and stress, so on and so forth. So I wanted to just lay that before you as you continue to consider what, that zoning map. I think they would want residential. I think there's easier solutions for all parties involved, and we may hear some more later this week, but please consider the residents as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Next on the list, Robert Latiri.
Members of the council, my name is Robert Latiri, and I've lived in the corner of Greenridge Street and Wyoming Avenue since 1944. The streetcar used to come down from North Washington Avenue and down Greenridge Street and out to Marywood. And I'm here tonight to discuss the safety of not only that corner, where I've seen multiple fatalities over the years, crashes, and likewise, down at the corner of Marion Street, which is part of our interest in this presentation. The, the highway there, the road there is considered a state highway. I remember the trucks coming down there over the years before the interstate was built. And the library is expanding their access for handicap use there with some construction on that highway. Now, the problem with the, with the, with the street there is that, pre-pandemic, the programs at the library consisted of programs for small children. And they were brought to the library in basically car seats. And I moved to the 1500 block 60 years ago, so I've been watching the traffic, because I've been retired for a while. And I could see these women trying to get their children out of the car seats and put back in their car seats, on the traffic side of the car, on the driver's side, which would be in traffic. The pandemic cut those programs short, and the programs are about to start again, so I'm interested in trying to get some activity there in creating a more safe environment. That brings us down to Marion Street. Now, this 1500 block has become a speedway when people cross from Greenridge Street up or down, and the first time they have to stop is possibly at the Scranton, at the large street, I believe it is. And my suggestion has been to Pendott to try to consider a four-way stop sign on Marion Street. Now, that seems to be a problem for Pendott. They had a meeting with the former city engineer who said, "We don't want another stop sign on Wyoming Avenue." Now, I don't know if too many stop signs, if there are stop signs at all. Pendott tells me that four-way stop signs have to be considered when you have 800 cars an hour on the main street, 200 cars an hour on the cross street. Well, I was up and down Delaware Street, and there are four, and all over town, there are four, there are four-way stop signs where there are not that kind of volume on the traffic. So we're interested in getting that kind of thing shaped up so that people will have another stop before they race down the hill into Central City, or coming up from the hill. So that's, that's an element with the, with the narrow streets and the parking, you have the buses coming through there. Another problem we have is that UGL, UGI, is it UGL, I guess, the paint company up in Dunmore, they've put their own signs up there directing traffic to their plant that Pendott tells we are not authorized, that they, they didn't put them up. And they're directing traffic onto Wyoming Avenue to get up to their place in Dunmore. I would suggest they'd go on Kapow Salmon, which is a much wider street, instead of squeezing through there with the cold buses, where there's never any passengers. They should probably use a smaller bus there. And the other trucks, all kinds of trucks are using that, that road, whether it's, they're directed there through the GPS things, which is another thing that is a possibility. But you'll hear later on from the director of the library program for the Scranton Libraries, Scott Thomas, on the petition he has for a study for that corner there.
Thank, Mr. Latiri, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your, but your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your five minutes is up.
I'm with this, so I don't know.
But no, that's, that's all right. So I do know that the walks, or the intersection of Greenridge and Wyoming, that signals and everything are going to be upgraded in 2023, using the green light go money, you know, we were awarded years ago. It was delayed a little bit, but it is going to be done in 2023. Well, I'll see what we could look into on, on the other parts of Wyoming. And then also UGL, because if I remember incorrectly, there was an issue with them going...
Through the smaller streets in Dunmore.
Through the smaller, and, and there was some sort of an agreement, but I'll look into that for you, too.
Right. Now, the, the other thing I might mention, that while the, the traffic signal at Wyoming and Greenridge Street is significant, it, it's only the beginning to really create a safe environment.
Yes.
To that entire block. Thanks very much.
But they will all be upgraded with newer crosswalks, and it's not only the lights, it's the intersection.
I have been told by Pendott they were going to put new lines on the street, they were going to try to doctor that up a little bit. Instead, they just plastered a lot of signs that, that have no significance, including 25 miles speed signs, which give you a dollar for everybody that's driving at 25.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the list, Scott Thomas.
I'm Scott Thomas, CEO of the Scranton Public Library. Mr. Latiri did such a good job that I don't have too much to fill in there. As he said, the library is embarking on a fundraising campaign to make that branch at the corner of Wyoming and Greenridge finally compliant with Americans with Disability Act. And the programs that he referred to have started, and they've been going on since the pandemic, and the library shares Mr. Latiri's concern about the traffic there. And the green, the green light go grant is really good news, and we know that's going to happen. What I have here is a petition with 200 signatures about, that asks the city to commission a traffic study of a four-way stop sign at the corner of Marion and Wyoming, because, and we have signatures here, because it's not just the library and Mr. Latiri, it's the neighbors as well, and even the St. Clair-St. Paul School are all very concerned about this. And what we're asking for is a traffic study that produces a document, Mr. Latiri made reference to a more informal one, we actually want one, we want the city to commission that. And so I'm not sure who I give the petition to, but...
You could leave it with Allison there, and we'll pass that, we will pass that along.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the list, Ron Elman.
Hello, council. Since I was gone for two weeks, do I get 15 minutes tonight?
No, it's only five for a week.
Must be misinformation, huh? All right. Listen. I'm going to tell you all what's on these bank statements, that this is a copy of a check I'm going to mention, so you know this isn't made up. July 29th, my son had $3 in his bank account, the one that died, and his social security disability came in for 841. Okay, July 31st, he died at Guy's Sickers. August 4th, I went to the bank to deposit. My ex-wife sent $3,000 towards his funeral expenses. They said I had to deposit the check, so that, that wasn't no big thing. Finally, August 10th, the check was posted, you know, on the bank statement. August 10th now, I don't know where it'd been for a week. They took the social security reclaimed, his 841, out of my $3,000. You know, people said they can't do that, but they did. Does anyone see where I'm going with all this? If this group in Washington is monitoring somebody's account with $3 in it, you could start seeing what's happening in this country. This is serious. Your cell phones can tell you almost where you're standing. The cars have black boxes. The bank tells them everything under the sun about you. That's what happened here. Bank turned in everything. They took, they took the check that was mine and sent it back to my ex-wife after they took out like $500, there was money in the bank, they just took it. There's no, nothing. All it says on here, reclaim social security. We're becoming like Germany 100 years ago, I'm not kidding you. Who ever heard of such goings-on in the past? Like I said, somebody with $3 in their bank accounts being, brings to the attention of the government. No wonder they're trying to hire 87,000 IRS people. They're going to be like an army. Do you realize, do the people realize they're going to be armed, or they can be armed? That's part of the situation with them. They, they're teaching them right now how to fire guns. It's been on television. An armed IRS man, now that's really necessary in this country, 87,000. They're not there to get people, they're there to, they're there to recover situations like this. They want to control us from birth to death, if you ask me, and I'm not an alarmist. I don't know. You know, Biden dumps all those three plane loads of people on our doorstep, and there's no problem, they're up there in drums, I don't know what they're doing, but when you send stuff, the same people up to New York and so forth, it's unlawful. Diseases that never been in this country before are overtaking us. Polio. Nothing's being done about the terrible situations, but this, this is proof that they are going against our rights, everybody's rights, not just mine. Everybody is being subjected to this and don't know it. It takes something like this to make you realize what's going on. I didn't have an idea about this till I went to the bank. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I'll, I have your number, I'll give you a call tomorrow, and I'll give you a number of someone that could help you out with that, okay?
The truck is still there.
It is? It was ticketed, though, I believe, but we'll, we'll look into that one, too.
That exhaust, the sign-in sheet for this evening, would anyone else like to address council?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
The name is, the name is Ken Norton, I'm from Rundle Street. Anyways, the reason I'm here is we have a sewer issue over our way. Now, on a normal day, the sewers are operating just fine. When you get downpour and the rains, every once in a while, the check valves in the basement... When you get downpour and the rains, every once in a while, the check valves in the basements don't work and you wind up pumping basically raw sewage back out onto the street. So anyways, I hope you didn't spend all the federal money. Because if it's possible, we've had a number of conversations with American Water, okay? Last one, when I came through, this is the response from February 19th that came back from me and from council, okay? So council has been involved. But anyways, end results is right now, you have Garrett Court. The sewers are over 100 years old and they're just not doing their job. So I don't know if it could be a joint venture between the city and the sewer or American Water. I don't know how it could be, but if you have some money, that'd be great to get the problem relieved over that way. Pretty much that's it. Oh, no, there is one other thing, if you don't mind. Since they were talking about traffic control, I got the reminder over the Island Street VIDOC again. Is it possible to get lines painted there so these little Toyotas understand which side of the road they should be on? That's it.
That's the VIDOC and Elman.
What's that?
Yeah, okay.
It's between Rundle and St. Anne. The actual problem goes down Garrett Court.
Okay.
And mostly storm water flows to Main Avenue and Garrett.
Okay.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to address council?
It was good to hear that the DPW has agreed to a contract. I hope that the fire and police follow suit very soon. I did some, and just playing around the other day. And if we, our budget might have some problems, as Joan has been pointing out, that they're not going to obviously deal with 1.2 or 1 to 2% cost of living. And I just did, you know, from 1 to 10%. And even if you go to like between 7 and 8%, we're going to have like $1.5 million worth of money to come up with to go back to the beginning of the year, which I'm sure will happen. So you might want to keep that in, in mind. And that's without any fringe benefits or anything. That's just straight salary. And this one's small, but it just got to me. I, I was going through the controllers report and I noticed, I didn't go back and add them all up, but people are buying things at the Daleville Ace Hardware. I would hope that when the city needs things, they can find a hardware store in this, within the city of Scranton. I think that should be just a given. And it would be helpful if we had a cash flow report made. P E L used to do that. And it's not being done now. And I just wonder if there isn't anything you could do to.
So we actually started restarting our financial meetings, similar to the Pell meetings. They're once a month instead of once a week. But our next one, I believe, is this upcoming Monday, so we'll bring that up.
Okay, that would, that would be helpful, yes. And now, Naog, would you please have the directions to the swim complex cupboard? As it is really painful to see those when you look at the pools and you see them filled in with whatever it is. And you know that there's not going to be anything done there. The study, has a study been kicked off yet?
We're waiting for a response to our correspondence last week.
You know, this is just going on and on. And it's going to be a couple of years. That's for sure. And then quickly on code enforcement. I don't think you guys ever follow through on, with HR on having the, like, position descriptions and stuff done. Cause I asked for something and I got back and they said, well, we can't do it because we don't have it. Because I don't, what do the, I would just really like to know what a code enforcer does. I mean, do they just wait for somebody to call them and then go out and see? Or do they actually, I know they're pretty sure anyway, that there's a person directed to a different part, each part of the city. And like, you know, East Mountain, I go up there and it's been going, going, going. The, the golden rod is probably up to my nose and nobody does anything about it. And there's.
Where, where is that?
East Mountain Road. It's, yeah, it's 1328.
So the right side of East Mountain Road going up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I do.
The turn, Marie? That, that big sweeping turn on the right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I hate to pick on just one person.
No.
Cause there's other, or one property, because there's a lot more of them too.
Is that the brush or is it an actual property?
No, that's property.
It's, okay.
Yeah. So I would really like to know what they do and when they do it, if we can get that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Just because I know that the brush, the brush arm that we had approved back in July to get the side of the road areas, that was delivered on Monday so we could start going out and.
Yeah, well, that's not, that's, this is.
Okay, I just didn't know if that's what, yes.
Property, yes, yes, okay.
We'll look into that one too. But thank you. Tom Coyne Menucha. The silence you've heard for almost the last four minutes is symbolic of the people's voice inside of this chamber. A number of us have come up before this body, whether it be Biden Street, whether it be zoning changes, whether it be being uncomfortable with how this city ignores its own policies by waiver. We have voiced that before this body. And what we have received in return from this body is silence to what the population wants. Our words are empty because we are not listened to as we should be. We deserve a better voice and when we have an opinion, it should not just be ignored like silence. Would anyone else like to address council?
You're probably afraid of that. Here I am, David Dawson, resident and taxpayer. Once again, I'm on this like a grizzly bear on a honeycomb. And sometimes I even resemble one bit. Send dump swatter to the sewer plant. Now, I don't know, Scott's here. He runs the library. I was wondering about this reverse osmosis. And I think I have it figured out. And here's what it is. The spoiled crudité water flows down to us and the money flows up to the landfill. Reverse osmosis. We really don't need. I, unregulated capitalism is essentially feudalism dressed up in a freshly polished coat of armor and passed off as only slightly rusty goods. You know, they're antiques. So I hope that this idea doesn't come to fruition. And it seems to be in the hands of a woman named Connolly. I don't know if she's a miss or a misses, and I really don't care. If she has a couple of kids, I wish she'd think about what the world's going to look like if people someday, if people keep getting these type of privileges with our, with our environment. That water will flow down into Naog Creek, through the gorge, down through South Scranton and into the Lacawanna River. And, you know, if there's any contaminants, somebody throws a handful of those disposable batteries away. They have alkaline in them and everything else. So whatever gets out. And by the way, if there's some type of accident where piss, tisk, we just didn't get things done right, but it gets into the creek anyway. I mean, we should be let go for it because we're old friends, you know? I never really believed much in philanthropy myself because I think that in a lot of instances, philanthropy is sanitizing a name that doesn't deserve it. I read in school in a fifth grade history book that John D. Rockefeller used to hand out shiny little dimes to the poor kids on New York City streets. Shiny little dimes. And, well, there was a labor strike in a camp called Ludlow and he hired a bunch, his son hired a bunch of thugs and shot about a hu, over 100 people to death. And, you know, he sanitized his name with philanthropy. So I really hope that something gets done about this. And they have their 44 years or 43 years. They don't need more. They absolutely don't need more than that. They're wealthy already beyond belief. And security has come up with the mayor and they mentioned that the city isn't accessible sometimes. And, you know, I don't know what's been said to her, but there are a lot of really distasteful threats and all kinds of stuff happening all over the country. People threatening children, people threatening voting, people that run the polls, all kinds of things. State, secretaries of state, because the vote doesn't turn out the way that somebody liked it. So they send in a threat. And it, it's really a shame that people behave that way. But I do have a plan where you should not be able to ride that elevator from downstairs or get in the front door. And there should be a policeman posted before you get beyond for any other employees, including licensing and inspections, because people get grudges. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council?
Hello, my name is Angelo Jarman. Well, I did not initially plan on speaking today. I would like to go over some more broad opinions and critiques and whatnot that I have that I'd like to share with you all, specifically when it comes to zoning. When it comes to the city of Scranton, I do believe that our zoning laws are far better than the majority of American cities, which completely outlaw the building of anything other than single-family homes. However, I do believe that the density of housing in our city is not sufficient to meet our housing needs and our population growth, both with those being born in Scranton and the influx of immigrants into our city for whom we have not been providing enough housing. When looking over the proposed zoning ordinance for this year, I noticed that for many of the residential areas of Scranton, we seem to have a build limit of two stories or 35 feet, which for many of the areas, even just outside of downtown, doesn't seem to make much sense. And a lot of, in our older zoning laws, we were allowed to build four or five-story buildings for apartment complexes that were not only denser and allowed more housing in the city, but were tax solvent. So we weren't wasting money on all the supportive infrastructure for these regions in the city that simply could not pay for themselves. And I do believe that we owe it to the taxpayers of this city to come up with a zoning ordinance that reuses our tax dollars responsibly and does not put, and does not put an undue burden on the people of this city. I do hope to come back next week with like more detailed opinions of mine that will be more helpful to you. But just as a general oversight, I'd like to voice my support for upzoning in Scranton. But just as a general oversight, I'd like to voice my support for upzoning in Scranton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. Last week, I talked about the Naog Pool, and I know it was mentioned again tonight. I think that we really need to, I saw that we sent a letter to the administration to ask them for a plan. I know they're talking about a master plan. But we really want to see a plan for a pool at Naog. So I appreciate you sending that, Mr. Waldenberg. I also had mentioned about a car that was parked up on Birch Street for about a year or nine months. 7:15, the next morning, I rode by and it was gone. So whoever was responsible for removing that vehicle, thank you. And the neighbors, thank you so much for that. I did contact Larry West last week about, we had received a letter from someone who visits the city often and talked about, I think I mentioned it last week, some of the entrances to our city. And I asked them, they particularly mentioned the corner of River Street and Meadow Avenue. And there were lots of signs there, it was completely overgrown. And I was happy to see that DPW sent a crew up there and they acted on that. And it looks so much better, so much cleaner, so much neater. And it really helped to improve the neighborhood and the entrance to the city. So I appreciate that. Also, I'm looking forward to having Mr. Laser, at least Mr. Laser. If Mr. McGovern can join him, that would be great as well, to come in here to caucus and speak about the payroll preparation tax. So I'll look forward to seeing that happen as soon as possible. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes. So last week, there was an inquiry about the audit update. I did reach out to the auditors, as well as the officials in the city that are working on the audit. And what I got was that the date of 9:30 will no longer be met. The auditors did not receive five of the documents that they were looking for by their August 1 deadline. So everyone out there, the auditors did give an August 1 deadline, and the city hasn't, has yet to meet the city's special fund, the Scranton Redevelop Authority Audit, the Sewer Authority Audit, the Capital Assets Report, and also the schedule of expenditures for federal awards. So that deadline will not be met. Speaking about the zoning, it's something I haven't been very vocal about. I did speak to some members in the Hill section. It's something I really haven't said too much about lately. But one thing is, I'm going to be looking at these changes very critically. When I was on the Planning Commission in 2013, I did vote against the sale and the rezoning of Audubon. And what we're seeing right now is some of the fears I had at that point in time. And at that point in time, I did speak about it. And I do remember when Geisinger was saying where the Audubon School is, there will be a small office building, and it will have underground parking. So some of these promises that were made at the time weren't lost on me, and they're things that I remember. So I'm very curious to see what some of the new, the new updates would be. And I'll be looking at them closely, just so you know. Thank you, Mr. King, for mentioning Naog Pool again. I'm in agreement. I do want to see what our plan is going to be for up there. And I'm sure we'll be talking about it every week until we get that plan. That is all.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. First, I was going to provide an update on, I believe it's 429 Prescott Avenue, where there was a fire back in March. I had mentioned last week that there has been a very large hole in the sidewalk that opened up with a storm from a few months ago. And so neighbors have been concerned and fearful to park there. And the hole was getting bigger from what I was told. And I think there was even a news story last week about it having a tomato plant growing out of it. So I just wanted to thank DPW for helping to address the issue because it was such a safety concern. And so that now is filled in and is safe for, for people to be able to walk on the sidewalk there along Prescott Avenue. The next thing I want to bring up, we had received an email earlier this evening from a resident who was complaining about handicap parking downtown in Scranton and how the handicap symbol on the parking signs is not really very obvious or visible for parkers. And they often notice that there are people parked in those spots, specifically handicap-designated spots, that do not have a handicap placard. And, and so they are asking if we could request from ABM or parking enforcement as to how they're, if they're ticketing those people that are parked in those spots. I know they mentioned specifically Penn Avenue being problematic or places where people might be stopping in quickly or picking people up and just parking in those spots. So if there's anything that we could do to make that more obvious. And I did notice myself, too, when those signs had changed a little while back, that, that it was really difficult to tell if it was a handicap spot or not. So I would certainly be in favor of us making changes there. I know they suggested possibly painting, painting the curb. So if we can, if we could work together with them to find out what we need to do to make sure that those spots are available for when people who really need them can use them. And I don't believe I provided this last week, about two weeks ago. Councilman Donahue and myself had met with representatives from American Water down at Birch Street. Birch Street was, was closed for about two years with work being done on it. And then when the restoration was completed, neighbors and people driving through really haven't been happy with, with what was, with the work that was done because there is a really large, a couple of large bumps in the road. And from what we had received our last update from them, they were going to be replacing the hatches because the hatches were loose and not the correct size that needed to be there. And so they did replace the hatches, and it's not as noisy. But the, but the paving is still a concern and an issue. And so they did say that they would add it to their next paving list and have that taken care of before the cold weather hits. So we'll be holding them to that to make sure that that street is finally completed and better for people to drive on. And the last thing that I'll just bring up quickly, I mean, I'm in agreement that we need information about Naog and what's happening there. I don't think I had mentioned it last week, but it, being in my neighborhood is especially important for me. I want to be able to use a pool there, too. And I really look forward to receiving more information on the master plan. But we really want to get that as soon as possible so we can find out what that, what that will look like. That's all I had to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a couple. So I'm in total agreement and sympathize and with my colleagues here about the pool situation. It's pretty sad that we have to bring it up every meeting now to ask for some type of update. We were promised before we went on recess. So I guess we have to keep doing this. It's kind of embarrassing at this point to all of you out there that, you know, we don't have an answer for you because guess what? We're not getting any. Secondly, so two weeks ago on the 6th, a concerned resident reached out to me about the Western Field Pool. That's, it's the pool, the indoor pool that's used daily. And the concerns were that, you know, it went from five days a week to three days a week to one day a week without notice to these elderly people that cherish this program. The one person told me that originally the program decades ago was called the Zipper Club because it was used for people that had open-heart surgery, and they were recuperating there. So even, you know, decades later, it's still not only a place to meet socially, but it's also a therapeutic place for, for people that are on the mend from knee replacements and surgery. So, so with that said, we were concerned about it, the residents where I was. Mr. Waldenberg sent, you know, correspondence down to Parks. And what we did receive was a response. We'll be offering this, so I brought it up on the 6th. We got a response on the 9th. It said we'll be offering more swim session time slots at Western, along with keeping the morning sessions open as much as we can with lifeguard availability. So, and they understand that the availability of lifeguards is, is, you know, is an issue because most of them were either, you know, summer workers that went back to college. So, so with that said, this resident went back, right? So she went back and she wanted to extend her, her membership, or re-up her membership another three months. And she was told that, she was told that we're not going to do that. What we're going to do is take your old membership card because you lost probably 31 days, and that was understood. And there's going to check off every time you come to get kind of like made whole. But the swimmers that go there every day devotedly, the hours are still fluctuating, the days are fluctuating. So what they really want to do is just re-up their membership, knock a month off if that's what's owed to them. They want to, they want to pay for a three-month, six-month, or a year membership. They want to know that they're able to go there. So, so the offerings are day-back instead, like I said, renewing the membership. So with that said, I spoke to this resident. And, you know, sometimes citizens have the best answers or solutions for the issues or concern that affect them the most. And I agree. Her ideas are that we should be actively recruiting lifeguards. There's pop-ups every week or every two weeks, there's job fairs. She made it, you know, had a good idea that let's have a pop-up at Western Field. Let's have a job fair at Western Field. And, you know, and use multiple, multiple means of media. You have a pop-up, it's free media. I know it takes, it costs a lot of money put, and they realize that, you know, taking an ad out for a lifeguard in the Scranton Times, and it's costly, and we all get that. But if there's more focus on this issue, because she said that, you know, she, she ran into someone the other day getting a hot dog somewhere. And it was a nice young lady there, said that, you know, she's a part-time lifeguard. We didn't know. We'd love to know that there's availability between classes, say if you're going to the U or Marywood, and for the morning program. She also said, this young girl said, you know, there's, we have a list of 12 lifeguards up at Scranton Country Club. So with that said, like, her ideas are good. Reach out to the colleges and country club. As a culinary instructor, people call me, I post job openings outside my classroom or in my Google Classroom. So they feel like that this is being put on the back burner. And they also suggest that, that, you know, maybe that whoever's in charge there, or even the director, should have some type of lifeguard training or certification so they can fill in to keep this program going. So with that said, because in that one letter, we were told that, you know, there was a lifeguard, this is two weeks ago, this came from Parks and Recs, that there was a lifeguard that was out on COVID. There was a lifeguard that was on vacation. So where are they with regards to staffing? I would like to know personally or on behalf of counsel, what does staffing look like at Western Field? How many lifeguards are they supposed to have? What happens when they don't have them? Do they advertise, or are they union? Like, I don't know anything about the employees over there. So, Mr. Waldenberg, could you please ask about the staffing, the normal staffing at Western, Western Field? And, and see if this, you know, these requests and these ideas from this resident may be considered.
I'll listen to them also.
Thank you. And then secondly, a concerned citizen came to me about Walgreens on South Main Avenue in West Scranton. I want to make you aware that at least for the last two months, Walgreens via their hired help routinely clean their parking lot. And by cleaning, I mean they use a leaf blower that actually blows the garbage and debris onto the sidewalks and onto Main Avenue. This occurs every other week. And this is also contributing to the blocked drains that we hear about all the time when we have these large storms. So like I said earlier, concerned citizens sometimes have the best answers for us or solutions because she reminded me that this action that they're doing violates Section 305-4 of subsection A, litter on sidewalks. So I thank her for bringing this to my attention. And, Mr. Waldenberg, could you alert code enforcement that this is occurring? Let them have a talk with Walgreens that they're, you know, they're actually violating the code, the city code.
I'll do that, sir.
All right. And you know what? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I have tonight, Mr. Waldenberg, could you check with PA American Water and also DPW regarding the sewer issue on the 1400 block of Rundle?
I will.
Thank you. And also make sure that the petition that Mr. Thomas brought is sent to the appropriate departments for a traffic study.
I'll take care of it.
All right.
Mr. Donahue, can I just add? I know we mentioned Mr. Laser's name quite a bit in here, and he serves honorably on a number of city boards. And Mr. Schuster mentioned to me that his wife passed away last Wednesday. She was a wonderful woman. I coached her son, Billy, at Central High School. And just a wonderful family. And I just want to send out our condolences to Bill Laser's family. Her name was Mary Ann Laser, and she passed away last Wednesday. And the funeral was on Saturday. So our thoughts and prayers are with the Laser family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg?
5B for introduction and ordinance approving the license agreement between the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, and Lackawanna College.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Sir, move.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, looking at this agreement, there's two questions I have, Mr. Waldenberg, if we could send them over to... There's two questions I have, if we could send over to the administration. Lackawanna College had rented Memorial Stadium and the practice field there off the school district. Can we ask if the administration had reached out to them to find out what they had paid for the leasing or renting of their field? And if it had any impact on the cost that they decided to, to agree upon for the rental? And also, with that being said, there is a small portion of this that talks about the maintenance of the fields. And I hope that if it's parks and recreation that are going to be overseeing their usage of the field, I hope they're going to be keeping a close eye on the maintenance of the field because it doesn't seem that the, that's really specifically spelled out. So if we could just see how we're going to monitor the maintenance of the field, as well as if they reach out to the school district for the price they derive that.
I'll ask both questions.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, we spoke, we spoke a little bit about this in caucus. First of all, $1,000 is, that's a great deal for Lackawanna, you know, compared to what the district used to charge. But part of the agreement, and it concerns me, is, okay, for $1,000, you get the field, right? Probably should have been negotiated more, but that's here nor there. But part of the agreement is to maintain the field or to replace or fix any damage that occurs on that field. So we had, we had some residents come here and had pictures and believes that maybe that happens. So I want to know within this agreement, who's going to provide the assessment when this agreement terminates? And, and make a decision on how they're going to, you know, fix this problem and bring, plus, we want it brought to our attention, too. I would like an update when this, when this agreement is over.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I agree that we need a plan in place for maintenance of this field. If they're going to be using it for the remainder of the year, then whether that needs to take place in the springtime. But repairs would be ideal to be made in the spring so that it's, that it's usable during the warmer months.
Yes. So the thing here is that there is a history of the, of the school using city properties or district properties. And I just want to make sure that it's been properly looked into. And I just want to make sure that it's been properly looked into. When we look at the price, the school district paid, charged $250 a day and $300 a night for practices. It's a big difference here with the pricing. I'm all for being a good neighbor, I'm all for renting and leasing our property, but just making sure the taxpayers are getting the best deal. So, I mean, with that said, there's a history here of renting properties, there's a history with the riverfront also. And if they've looked into these things, would go a long way with making deals and agreements.
Anyone else on the question?
So I would just compare this to just leases we do with other nonprofit organizations, whether it be Little Leagues, whether it be the Anthracite Bike Coalition back at Connel Park, where we lease land and in turn for leasing that land, those organizations maintain, you know, that field. So I, you know, I mean, I'm fine answering, asking questions about that, but I mean, I just don't want to be targeting Lackawanna here specifically because we do lease space in our parks to multiple different organizations all across the city.
All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction and ordinance designating back in angle parking for certain blocks of St. Anne Street.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm thrilled and very proud of the St. Anne's residents that created position, signed a petition to bring back angle parking. It was always there as long as I can remember. I'm 60 years old, so it predates me. And for whatever reason, no one really totally understands, it was taken away from the residents. Being stated that there was no ordinance on the books to allow it, which is fine. So a traffic study was done at 90-degree angle a couple of years ago, it didn't make any sense. And we never got a full traffic study or a full report that made sense to the residents. So the residents asked for another one. They said, you know, how about a 30-degree angle, which is more realistic, how would the cars really park there with probably the widest street in the county? And that was conducted in a professional manner. We got pictures of it, you could see it was done very well and they came to the conclusion that it's allowable. So I'm very happy for the residents that came forward and really pushed this to happen. So I'm definitely supporting this and voting yes.
Anyone else on the question? Solicitor Gallagher, just to make sure we're doing this right, will you make sure to double check it, see if we have to have a public hearing for this or not? Thank you. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of GBAS Realty LLC to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $1,050,000 for the project to be known as JBAS Scranton Tower Project located at Franklin Avenue and Mulberry Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act up to the amount of $900,000 for the project to be known as Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape located from the Shed west to the Cedar Avenue intersection, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of United Neighborhood Community Development Corporation to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $250,000 for the project to be known as Scranton Workforce Housing Project located at Pine Brook Section, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of Community Development Properties, Scranton, Inc., to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $210,000 for the project to be known as HVAC Commercial Properties Upgrade Project located at Linden Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18503.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of Green Ridge Little League to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $113,765 for the project to be known as Playground Makeover with ADA Compliant Pathways Project located at 2632 Oliphant Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I just wanted to mention, we've seen some similar projects and grants and I'm just really happy that as a city, we're trying to make our parks more ADA accessible. I think that's really important and something that's been missing. So I'm happy to vote for introduction of this grant application.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5I for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of Neighbor Works Northeastern, Pennsylvania to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $105,262 for the project to be known as Cloverfield Redevelopment Project located at 400 West Locust Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5J for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Barry Isit and Associates to provide demolition engineering services within the City of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5K for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of the Cooperative Farmers Market to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $36,750 for the project to be known as Farmers Market Security and Facilities Upgrade Project located at 900 Baring Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18508.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the Council Number 20, 2022, requiring the Scranton Tax Collector to waive additional charges for real estate taxes beginning in tax year 2023 under certain circumstances when notice was not received pursuant to Pennsylvania Act 57 of 2022.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the Council Number 21, 2022, adopting the debt management policy for the City of Scranton attached heretofore and marked as Exhibit A.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 113, 2022, reappointment of Andrew T. Zelazella, Ph.D., of 505 Colfax Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring on August 31, 2027.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 114, 2022, authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Siemens Industries, Inc., to provide heating and cooling software upgrade to City Hall and Weston Field House.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 115, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Local Share Account for up to $190,000 for renovations to the Billy Barrett Park in the Manuka neighborhood of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of 7E. Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 116, 2022, authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with ESE Window Sales, Inc., doing business as Pella Windows and Doors of Northeastern Pennsylvania to provide contractor services for the front door project within the City of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of 7F.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 117, 2022, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Community Development Block Grant Program, CV Funding, through the Department of Community and Economic Development for up to $15 million to be used by Lackawanna College to establish a new workforce education and training center in downtown Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 118, 2022, authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the City of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Highland Associates to design and construction phase consultation services for restoration and repairs to the exterior of Scranton City Hall.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final vote on item 7H.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd like to make a motion to table item 7H.
Second.
There's a motion on the table and a second to table item 7H. On the question?
So on the question, looking at this document, I think it needs to be cleaned up a little bit before it's sent to council. There's a couple, there's a couple mistakes, maybe it looks like copy and paste errors. When we're looking at the legislation itself, it stated that it's for demolition engineering services, not roof and masonry repairs. So I think on that legislation, that needs to be taken a look at. On page four, it states that, on the top of the page, it states that it's for roof and masonry repairs, but then as you get into the backup, it states that it's for the East Mountain Flood and Stormwater Project. So I'm not sure what happened there. In addition to that, on page 132 of the backup documentation, it seems that there was a telecommunications meeting that occurred where some of the scope of the work had been changed. So when we're looking at the initial bids, this bidder does appear to be the lowest bidder. However, there's a $20,000 change in the scope of the work that takes them out of being the lowest bidder. So I think we're going to need some information on this before it continues.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of tabling item 7H signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and 7H is tabled.
Eighth order, 8A, file the Council Number 9, 2022.
Excuse me. This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It has been tabled to allow for additional input and any changes.
8B, file the Council Number 19, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the 2023 capital budget. It has been tabled to allow for a public hearing, which was held this evening. It will be put on a future agenda for a final vote. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.